Okay, it's that time, everybody, so let's bring the meeting to order. This is the council meeting for Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. Would you call their order, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Canaple?
Here.
Councilman Batcong?
Here.
Councilman Ewone?
Here.
Councilman Peters?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
Here.
Councilman Reeves?
Here.
City Attorney Mullin?
Here.
Thank you. We have approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, I just had one on here. Everything else looked good. Did you, I thought you did, uh, sorry, so everybody's looking at it. Uh, special council meetings minutes Wednesday, August 18th, 2021. Just the very last agenda on that vote. You did vote on that.
Actually, no, but do you want to?
I did contact them to ask over this. They listened to it and said she didn't formally vote and that she's tried to recuse herself. And because she doesn't have to vote that, to say that she abstained.
Okay.
So that's why we're doing it the way that I did. I did contact them to make sure it was legal, how I needed to handle it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving minutes? Any opposed? Okay, the next item is the bills over 2,000.
Uh, we just have our normal WEX bill, attorney invoice, and Tennessee asphalt repair, which is a normal one, but it's 5,200. Our attorney invoice is 2,770. And then the plate bill is 3,577. But I also wanted to, um, Scott was gonna address one thing. Did you want to add it now, Scott? Um, we, it come in after hours today, but there's for the HVAC for the Stevens Building, if you guys want to add it in or if you want to add it to the agenda to discuss. And we also have a change order for the walking track that needs to be discussed. So I don't know how you guys want to do those two bills, if you want to add them and discuss them.
So this is, you asked me to add them?
Yes, motion to add it, yeah.
You want them on business?
However you.
Can we just put them right in with this right here, their bills? So I might just put them right in with this?
Are they, they're just bills, not?
It was the invoice for the HVAC at the Stevens Building and then for the walking track.
How much are those?
Um, the HVAC, uh, was 8,625 dollars. And then the walking track was 7,943 dollars and 18 cents.
Wait, wait, the HVAC was how much?
8,625 dollars.
Thought it was 6,400.
That's what we got last year and.
When it should have been done.
Everything has gone up.
So we paid more than, okay, again, I'd like to make a motion that we add those to the consideration of bills over 2,000?
Second.
It is finished up there and Les says it's amazing how different the temperature is in there now.
Do we have a vote to add them?
Yes, I'll, I have a second on that.
I got, I got that.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're adding those to be considered. So do I hear a motion to?
Motion to approve all bills.
Motion to approve all. Do I hear a second?
Second. Second.
Second. Any discussion?
My discussion would be after HVAC. What was the other one?
It's for the walking track and it's 7,943 dollars and 18 cents. And it is in your agenda package because I did get it after the fact.
I am disappointed that we spent more than we would have if we would have done it back then, but that's my only discussion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see them voted on separately.
Okay, we have a motion to vote on them sec- well.
We're in the middle of a motion.
I'm sorry. We're already in the motion to vote on it all together unless you want to amend that. You can vote on that.
That would be whoever made the motion.
Yeah.
You made the motion to approve.
I'm just looking to see, I mean, we can amend it to vote separately if you want.
I'd like to.
Well, I just suspend my, I rescind my motion, make a motion to vote on them separately.
Okay, we have a motion, vote separately. Do I have a second?
Second, then.
Any more discussion about?
Is that the two additional ones that we vote separately? What, what do you want voted on separately?
I'd like to see us do all three separately.
It'd be five.
Five.
It'd be five.
Okay, we'll do all five separately. Let's take them one at a time then, please.
Okay, the three.
And I think I know what you want. You want the two that were added separately, right?
Right, yeah.
I rescind my motion, make a motion to approve the three original bills and then vote on the other two bills separately.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any discussion on that? If they're all in favor.
Aha.
Any opposed? So the first three bills are approved. Now, which, which is the next?
It's the HVAC and the walking track.
Let's talk to the HVAC, please. Do you want to hear a motion to approve that? Motion to approve. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that one? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the next one would be the walking track? Do I hear a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I'd like to know why they charge us nearly $8,000 more and it's a lousy job.
Well, it's not finished yet, but can you address that?
The additional fees was where the, uh, the circle track was to be added that T-Dade required us to do because that was what y'all agreed to do in very front of the one that's to get rid of it. They took some really soft spots and they had to wind up excavating out and filling it back in with shot rock to bridge over so they could even paint it because the paper wouldn't even hold up. It was so soft. So that's what the additional, um, quantities there are.
And they had to bring that from another city, so it was also?
Well, it's just the shot rock was not, when we did the original job, we didn't get, um, undercutting or that kind of rock. So there was no big quantity in the job beginning, so we had to add it.
And if I'm understanding, when the original engineer put this together, there wasn't even any grade included?
Those items were not part of the original cement of the T-Dade. So I was, I was stuck with what y'all, what got cemented in the very front. That's what we've been battling the whole time is what originally got approved years ago was what we had to, had to deal with.
Clarification, are you saying the extension was not part of the bid?
The extension was, but they didn't know there was a thick, soft area was gonna be big though to take them off. And T-Dade, T-Dade's gonna require you to put that track in regardless, so it had to be done in order to fulfill the grant.
Yeah, I think they should have done a little more work before they put in bid. But that's all I'll say. I'll leave it at that.
It's not finished yet. It still has degraded once the ground gets dry, is what I heard.
Correct.
And we've also, Scott, you want to speak to this? We have applied to try to get more in that grant because, because the engineer didn't originally put all of this in.
We have applied to increase the amount of the grant funds that we're gonna get to pay for this. But we don't know if we'll get it nor when. So what this, this grant requires us to pay it upfront and then to get reimbursed. So the change order is to prove us to pay their, that additional amount. Then they've got some additional invoices to do for the original contract.
They're aware, they're aware that the engineer didn't include all of this in the original scope of this and that it has to be done. So there are some funds that have come through T-Dot that may be available for us to help with this.
Can we get updated on that whenever that does happen? Because he's saying we don't know how much, when, and that, if, can we, whenever that happens, we'd like to know that.
We've applied last couple, about a week or so ago and it's gone through, it's, it's actually gone through the state to get the signature. So I'm hoping that sounds, hoping that's a good sign.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of approving that building?
Aha.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Any opposed? Okay, do we have, this is the time for citizens' concerns. If anyone here has a concern they want to address to the council that has to do with our city, we will continue that.
Thank you. What I do, stand up there and state your name and hat, pitch, warning and everything. All right, I'm Josh Gibbs. I'm representing the Smith County Football League and the president's there. I know you are familiar with the light situation that we have going on, but I want to make sure that everyone is aware of what all is being affected, with the lights not being there. We got about 120-plus kids that are down there that are playing football or cheerleaders. That's not talking about all the other parents and kids that are there. We practice from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. Y'all know right now it's dark by 7:30. So we've already had to move our practices back to, or move our practices up from 5:30 to 7:30. So what we get into with moving our times is heat index, you get into homework after school, you get into other sports, and you get into parents who are not off work yet. So in a couple more weeks, we're gonna have to try to move back to about 5:00. So what I'm saying is if we don't get some lights up there, we're gonna have a football team and a cheer team who's already paid their fees and we've already told them they'll have a, you know, a full season. They're gonna have half practices. And then we're gonna be facing teams that are having these full practices on these more extravagant fields. So I just want everyone to be aware. I've talked to a few councilmen, councilwomen, and I just thought it was a good idea for me to come in here. I've also talked with the mayor. This has been drug out and drug out and drug out. And just so y'all know, at the beginning of the year, I was told that by July the 31st, the end of July, I was told that we would have lights. So that's why I had it showed up in here and tried to push, 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 you know, because that's what I was told, so I took the word for it. But now we've.
Who told you that?
The mayor. Me and the mayor were talking and she told me it wouldn't be no problem to have them up by the 31st. And that, that was at the beginning of the process, like right when the lights had got taken down. So March, whenever that, whenever that was, I can't tell you a definite time, but at the very beginning of the process, the lights got taken down for safety reasons. We talked, we talked back and forth, and I was told by July, the lights would be up. We don't start practicing until, you know, a little bit after that or right there around that time. So we were like, no big deal. But now this is a big deal. It's a real big deal because 120-plus kids and all their parents are coming at me and, you know, I promised them a football season. So now I have a real big problem keeping my word. So I know, I know the battles that we're facing here. I know all the things that's happening with this. I've caught back up with what's going on. All I'm asking is why y'all work out your problems that you got going on? Just stick some lights up there so we can make it through this season. Just some lights to be able to see. And I don't know exactly what kind of lights that you got. I know we cut our poles down very short, so the lights that we got, they can't be too bright or we'll be blinded out there. So it's, it's so late in the game right now to be battling this, is what I'm getting at.
The lights that y'all donated to us for that, would that be a temporary fix for y'all or would we need to get something not as bright?
The lights that Upper Cumberland donated? The ones that Upper Cumberland donated, I have not looked at them. I don't know exactly which ones that they are. I do know that they are not fall field lights. I do know that.
Where, where? I just didn't know if that'd be too bright or not bright enough.
I, I wouldn't be able to tell you. I mean, it is a concern with the poles being a little bit lower, that it'd be too bright. If we put them all up there, just me speaking on what I believe, I believe it'll be too bright with all of them on. I mean, you.
Do you feel like that if we do put up the temporary lights that, that will get you through the season?
Yes, sir.
That's what we need to?
Yes, sir. If I get the temporary lights up, like I said, we don't play games here. We play games at the high school. They're, I mean, it's great they let us do that. We've just gotta make it through these practice times. I have three football teams and three cheer teams. So we're spread out all the way across that field out there. And, you know, in the back, before we got the security light that got put up a few weeks ago, I mean, it was completely dark in there where you were running out to get out of the dark. But that light has made it where at least it's not dangerously dark right now, but you still can't practice out there.
But to get it up, you know, temporarily, that would suffice you through the season?
Yes, yes. If we could just get temporary lights and make it to that 8:00 at night, I don't care about how else it happens, sir.
Then I, I'm 100% behind us getting that up to standards uh, because it's great, great programs. Y'all put a lot of time into doing this stuff. I just got a question for future reference. Ballpark figure, to use the phrase. What percentage do you think of the kids that are participating are citizens of Carthage?
In our league?
Uh huh.
About 98%.
Really?
Yep.
Okay, more than I thought.
Guarantee you that.
That's good to hear.
I can guarantee you that because we've dealt with that. Just so you know, I, I don't want to take kids from another area just to be successful. I want to use our children so they get the playing time. And I have made that point this year and you can talk to all the tri-counties, surrounding counties, that I won't accept kids from another place to come here and play because I don't believe in it. I don't think it's right because you're taking away from this kid who lives here and will play high school here to let a kid move in here, be a star, and then move back out to another place.
I just didn't know if you had a lot from out in the county.
Nope, we don't do that. I mean, I mean, yes, there's, there's kids from out in the county that's here, for sure. I, I mean, I.
I think the reason I'm asking this is for future, when we put up permanent lights, I just don't accept, and I think we ran into this with the pool too, that the county is not helping us on this plan. I think it's ridiculous. I think it's nearsightedness on the county commission. But, but I still want to say let's get it done.
Well, since I understand your question a little bit, better let me answer it a little bit better. Yes, there's kids within this county, all over this county coming in here. I thought you meant from other cities.
No, 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 no.
Other towns. So yes, it is lots of county kids here too.
I thought, I think what you're asking, aren't you, if, how many kids are like from Carthage?
Yeah, I, I couldn't tell you that percentage.
That's what you're asking.
That's kinda, how many, how many people from out in the county that are not paying city taxes, but yet the city taxpayers are having to put these lights up?
I see your point, but I can't honestly answer your question. But I see where you're going to. And I would love more support, however I can get it. I don't care if it's from the county, the city, whoever.
Absolutely.
I don't care if it's from South Carthage. Somebody just, you know, help us out.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we install temporary lighting on the football fields ASAP, starting as soon as tomorrow. Second.
Okay.
I think we got it over.
It's on the agenda.
It don't matter. I made the motion.
Okay, I, I would like to help this out, this process.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second on the board.
Yes, but it's motion, second is any discussion?
So that's, I mean, I'm not.
I do, I do want to make a point because we've got some, some things that will happen with this. When the lights were taken down, as you remember, we arranged to get the temporary lights that we've had here for, forever here. At the same time, we got some estimates, and I want to show you, this is Joey Harper's estimate. We've got three lights. He began to do this for 8,500. We asked several electricians around. His was the best. So he says he can start this tomorrow if we vote on this tonight. So I'm all in favor of this. And when we talked, uh, Josh, I thought at the time the council was gonna go ahead and vote for this. That's why I assured you because we had three lights, we had this. So now, we need it now. I agree with you 100%. We need it now and I'm all for, all for doing this now. So I'd also like to include with this motion, if we could go ahead and get Joey Harper to do this and start tomorrow. Can we do that? I'd like to amend the motion if somebody will do that.
Can I, can I see that? So I can amend the motion to what's asked?
Certainly, yeah.
We've got a discussion here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just trying to slow this down real quick. We want lights. Lights got taken down and we know what that was. We had a whole meeting on it, okay? But now we're rushing.
Those weren't the same lights. We're talking about the actual lights in the lobby.
I, I get, I get, let's, I'm just trying to slow us down so we start throwing out 8,500. Can we just slow down for a second? Because we do have this on the, we do got this on unfinished business, okay? And it might be the best fix. It might not. I don't know. And we're gonna be talking about doing temporary lights. So now we got 8,500 temporary lights. Then we might be getting full-fledged new lights that are more. And I'm, I mean, I mean, what are we doing here? I mean, who's gonna, are the taxpayers are gonna basically be responsible for this mess-up that happened for 8,500? Because that's, that's pretty expensive for just, for something being done that we didn't claim responsibility for and then we claimed, then we found out it was our responsibility.
We're talking about two different things. He's talking about the regular ball field lights that had to be taken down. They've been up there 40 years. Two of them have fallen down. We're talking about two different things here. Those, those had to come down because of security.
We didn't know they had, we didn't know about it, though.
Yes, 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 you did.
We did discuss that, Colleen.
Yes, we did.
We did discuss the security lights. We discussed the lights that failed.
So we're talking about, okay, fill, fill me in and educate me because I guess I'll. The ones that the poles are cut off of, you know, that, that was the one that was discussed that we were taking down because of the safety issue. Okay. The ones that got taken down with the security lights around the perimeter that we were not made aware of. Okay. That's, that's the two different. So we're looking to replace the perimeter lights now?
Actual poles.
Just, just the ones on the poles, posted up to light up the field so they can practice this year. That's what we're looking for. So we're looking to replace the ones that we voted to take down originally? We had to take down.
We had to take down.
Because of the safety, because of the insurance.
They were like 40, 50 years old.
One of them had failed out on the field and someone reported it.
Yeah.
I do have a quick question. So this would be to put up?
Three, three lights.
It would include everything. It would include wiring, hanging them.
This is permanent. This is not the temporary that we're, we're talking about. Okay, this is the permanent.
But, but it's.
But it would be a temporary fix to a, a bigger problem.
And they're free, they're free to us also.
And I'm, I'm not trying to.
Oh, okay, I see. This, this is a bill to put those lights up that?
We have already, tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay.
And you can start tomorrow.
I'm not trying to be argumentative here. I'm just trying to educate myself on this if y'all don't mind. On these lights, these are lights that they would put up tomorrow. They wouldn't be, they're not gonna be temporary. Am I, am I clear on that? This is something we need anyways.
Kind of semi-permanent. At one point, at some point in time, I'm sure we will replace them, but they'll be way down the road.
So we're gonna, these are something that we need regardless of what happened.
It's for safety purposes. You know, these kids can see at night, yes. They've needed them for a couple of months now.
If it'll make it easier for you, I'm gonna table the ballpark lighting until January of next year. We're not gonna entertain that until January of next year so we can get all of us together, get bid, get what we want right. But we need to put lights back up there so they can play. That's what this is about. I know it's gonna cost us money, but we've gotta do it. There's no way around it. We can't, these kids can't suffer for the errors that we made. Yeah, I, I know. This, this sucks.
So we're looking, we were talking about making an expansion on the lights and a better set of lights anyway. We've been discussing that. We're just kind of putting this up so that we can have time to go on.
Right, so we can make an educated decision.
Can I interject on that? We talked about this in planning, I don't know if you recall. So the temporary lights, to me, is what you guys have to do because the lights that you're talking about in January, that's where we talked about the flood map is gonna change. So to me, you can't even entertain that idea until we know.
It's gonna be a process.
Yeah, it's, it's.
That's why I'm telling on that idea.
That's, that's gonna be a process for us.
I'm gonna vote for this, but I don't like it. I don't like how this went down. This is, I don't think that this is how this should have gone down. I think we could have done this a lot better and anyways, I'm just saying, this, this is a terrible situation, ma'am, but it is what it is. I'm gonna rescind my original motion, make a motion that we approve this 8,500 for three temporary lights to start being installed tomorrow. Second.
Motion is second. Any, any discussion on that?
Molly, just got, did he say, does it say on here how long he thinks it might take to put them up?
He says it might take him four, four or five days at most. So it's about that, next week.
We seconded that.
That's right.
Any, I'm sure if y'all want to go out and have a.
Do we have the vote, Mayor?
Yes, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there citizens' concerns? She answered me too.
No more citizens' concerns, all right? Okay, then we'll move into the mayor's report. Just wanted, just wanted a couple of really nice things that have been happening here. I think you all are aware that citizens brought things to give, supplies to give to the Waverly victims. We literally had people from all over the county in here bringing things in. This whole room was filled with supplies. They took us, a week ago Thursday, they took a trailer load down and we want to thank, uh, Hocktown Barbecue were giving us the trailer to take that down. And then, uh, was it Sunday that Ches and his mom actually drove, yes, it was Sunday. They drove down in his pickup truck, again, loaded with stuff. And his, his mom rode shotgun, 91 years old, all the way down to, to Waverly. We want to thank them. And then there was enough left over to take some to the Emmanuel House and some to the spot. So thank you again to everybody from here, the county, everything. And this is really what our county is about. It's very, very enlightening to see that happen. We're gonna talk more tonight about the fire hall expansion. That's gonna be more. I'm gonna let Evan address that later. Hopefully, we're almost, getting close to getting that started. Main Street paving, we're gonna talk about tonight too. We found a way to maybe move ahead with that and then worry about the water lines later, but we'll talk about that. As far as the water and sewer lines, we have gotten an estimate. If we were to replace the water line, Main Street, it's pretty expensive. So, so what we're doing is reaching out to every possibility for grants. We've reached out to state, we've reached out to federal government. We've got some grant applications in for water and sewer, somewhere down the line when we start having to replace this. I'm, I'm just reporting this.
I was gonna ask a question.
Yes.
We had a water line on Main Street. I thought my water line was on the back areas.
There's a water line on Main Street.
Les?
That's why we were waiting for it.
Water line on Main Street.
Water line that starts at Ward Avenue and goes underway. There's a whole water line in front of Main Street, no.
It doesn't run the whole length of Main Street?
No, it don't run the whole length of Main Street.
It's from right up here all the way down to Smut.
Ward Avenue, all the way.
Were we talking about this tonight? Yes. Okay, I'll save my questions for this.
So just to let you know, we are applying for grants for that. Back to, to the walking track, Evan will talk more about that. But we, we are having a sign made to put in front of it. And again, this is all coming out of the dog park budget. So when that's finished and the dog park is finished, we're gonna ask the Boyd Foundation to come down here because they're the ones that gave the $25,000 award for this dog park. And we've been able to plant trees. We're gonna have benches out there, all kinds of good stuff. So it's, we really appreciate that.
Mayor, do we have an estimated time of completion on this? Estimated time of completion?
For the dog park?
Yeah.
I'm hoping by the end of this month, yeah. Part, part of the reason it's, like everything else, things have been backordered. The, the scouts just had some sickness or this is actually, John Kelly's helping us with this.
No, I was just curious as when it was gonna open. I was curious.
Yeah, it knows, we're hoping by the end of the month. It all will open at the same time and we have to coordinate with the Boyd Foundation to come down and do their presentation at the same time. So we'll have a, hopefully, a big opening ceremony. We don't get to have our market fest in September because the ground has been so saturated, they just can't do anything out there. But we can, we can.
Could that be coordinated with it?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. We can have a grand opening. We can still have some food trucks come out.
But we can't, they can't park on the, the asphalt they just put down?
Well, no, it's not that. We haven't got the grading yet. The grading and seeding hasn't been finished out there.
So is that gonna, I, I, that may have been what you're asking, maybe not. But I was, I was thinking the completion of the dog park and the completion of the walking track, will that be coordinated together or will the walking track be further off?
It would be a grand opening of both.
End of this month?
Hopefully so. We're crossing our fingers on that. And I think, I think we're, once we can get enough dry land, and Evan will tell you about that, but that's what's holding them up with all the rain. It's just, they're sloshing through mud trying to grade it out there. Yes, sir.
To answer your question, I'd rather nobody park or that walking track.
Absolutely.
No, I was just, I was just curious. I mean, not parking, I would say put maybe tents up or something that you could add yourself your market fest, but.[1659.22]
Is it?
It's, it's not, not for this month.
Going forward, will that not be down there anymore?
Market fest?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, yeah. In fact, in October, we're hoping to have one. October, November. It's just, this has to be finished first. We can't put trucks and stuff out on the ground when it's still muddy or not seeded. So, hopefully, by the end of this month, it'll all be graded and seeded and then by October, yeah, we can go back to that.
It's the twenty-third. Is that locked in there?
Of October?
Yeah. Uh, we're doing the Tennessee maneuver thing at the courthouse that same day.
Okay.
It'll be a day-long event that we're doing, uh, with, uh, World War Two.
Okay. Well, let me talk to the, the whole committee for this. Let me talk to them and see if they can move that around.
I mean, it would all go together, but, you know, the times and everything would be important.
So, that's gonna be at the courthouse?
At the courthouse, yeah.
And from what time to what time again?
Uh, it's all day.
Oh, okay.
And, but the, the actual presentation, the event, the, the people buying tickets for it is at night. So.
Okay.
But they'll have the balloons and the ghost army and all that there during the day.
Let me talk to the committee. We can, we can wiggle around in it for you.
Well, what about the possibility of incorporating both of them downtown?
Yeah.
Bringing more people to downtown and having the market fest actually downtown?
Well, that's really good. The whole idea is try to emphasize the park.
Yeah, emphasize the park.
Well, I, I get that, but if, if we're trying to, we have another event going on, it can, they can help each other.
The courthouse event, they're using the whole lawn, both sides.
Yeah.
But we're not just talking about somebody walking days, just have market fest for that area.
I see what you're saying.
I would say, let's committee start to, 'cause one's a public committee, one's a private committee. And being that the maneuvers is a private organization, I mean, I'm, I think it'd be a good idea, but also I do, you know, I see the point of us exemplifying our park.
No, it's not private. It's not a private organization.
The maneuvers?
No.
Who, who, who's that volunteer?
John Leff, which is.
Well, let, 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 let me.
I mean, it's a private.
It's not, it's not private.
He's saying it's not a county or a state.
It's not a government organization.
No, no, no.
Yes, it's a private organization.
It's just focused on this area here.
Let me talk to the Parks and Recreation Committee and we'll work it out. So, we, 'cause they, they have a whole thing planned with music and food and all kinds of stuff. So, we, we don't, we don't wanna take away from that glory is what I'm saying.
Well, if they were interested in, in considering this, I think for this one time, it wouldn't be bad to move market fest there if they want us to.
If it worked for both of them.
If it worked for both events, I think it would actually draw more people.
Yeah.
Well, let, let's talk to the committee 'cause they're the ones.
Yeah, I think it's not really under review. I think it's two committees.
Talk to the committee.
I like the idea.
Yeah, but we'll certainly pass it along. Okay, that's my report. Uh, attorney Molly, do you have any?
Uh, well, you know, I've been in contact with y'all a lot this month, this previous month. You know, kind of what I worked on this past month. Um, as far as going forward, um, there was, I don't, I don't really have anything new business. We're in the works of trying to work out the issue with the tax situation with the tax appraiser. Uh, mayors and attorneys for the individual entities have a meeting next week. I don't know the outcome of that yet. I'm just telling you that's what's forthcoming, as we sit here right now. Uh, I think based upon, like I told y'all the last time, based upon my conversation with the previous attorney, that was kind of the, a big issue legally that was still pending about what was owed. I did have a conversation with the county's attorney, maybe last week or something, and he wanted to know what had happened. Um, I can tell you guys that the proposal that was made, uh, they outright rejected that. So, I don't, I don't even, I haven't even seen that letter. Mister, was that the previous attorney's name?
Moore.
Moore. Mister Moore was supposed to send it to me. He didn't. I don't even know what the proposal was, but I did mention to the county's attorney, I said, I think there was a proposal, and he's kinda laughed and said, yeah, that won't be accepted. So, where we're at now, I don't know. But that's where we're gonna meet and see, and I'll report back to you guys and let you know what we find out.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
How do you feel about that?
About what?
That, all, just that? The, the meeting that's coming up?
Uh, I, there's three others, there's three other mayors and three attorneys, so we'll see, definitely see what, what comes out of that. Uh, I, I can't speak for the others just at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, I, 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 I know there has to be a fair agreement. And, and I, I, I didn't, that's the first I've heard that they, I didn't agree to our.
You seem surprised. That's why I was asking.
Yes, I, I, that's the first I'd heard that. So, yeah, I don't think the others had heard that either. So, um, okay, um.
I was just gonna point something out. Appreciate the way you're doing your invoicing, showing exactly who you're talking to, what you're working on, how many hours it's taking. I think that helps us a lot to see what's going on. So, I can say I truly appreciate it too, 'cause that's, that's.
Well, and I'll let you guys know this, just going forward on the invoicing, same thing I do for the city of Monterey. You might see next month when I submit it, I'll just keep a running tab all year. You'll see where you've made the payment for this past month. You know, it'll say payments received and it'll automatically reduce from what you paid whatsoever next month. So, when I turn it back in, I don't want you to look at it and be like, why in the world is he turning back in the exact? I, I'll, I'll just keep turning that tab in and you'll see, oh, we paid it up to this date and then, and I'll put in there check received blank, and then from that point forward is what will be open. So, you'll have it all year long of everything that I've done. Once the year rolls around, you'll have everything done. If that's what you want me to do, if you want me to delete it and create a new doc, I should've asked y'all what you wanted me to do. I shouldn't have said that. If you want me to delete it and create a whole new document, I can. Or if it's okay just to keep a running tab every month, I can do that for you, for me, or for Rob, or whatever you wanna do.
I think that's fun to see all of the grants.
Ooh, it's all broke down individually and just keeps running cold. I think it's perfect.
Okay, thank you. Um, our city recorder.
Hi, I just wanted to touch on utilities training. I know that you and I have already talked about talking tomorrow. I don't know if you're on it, but if you need help, if you need me to do anything, just let me know.
I did mention to her about the classes coming up, September seventeenth and eighteenth in Chattanooga.
Right, we just need to get that figured out so you guys have it done in time.
Good deal.
Do we all, are, are we up for needing the utilities this year?
I think all of you guys had done it when Jennifer was still here and everybody was up to date. So, just because they're new, they've gotta.
So, you'll let the rest of us know when we need it?
We did all those at Christmas, remember, the cramming.
That's what I thought, okay.
Whole bunch of them, a twill.
What it takes.
It was a bunch of them.
Diane. Thank you. Uh, Chief Davis, do you have anything from the police department?
Everything's running smooth, guys. Police department, uh, the only thing I really have for y'all is I've got two things I need to order, and I don't know if y'all wanna take that up right now or wait till a little bit later on in new business, but I've got to order stuff for the new patrol car. And, um, so I've got those two items. If y'all want me to talk about that now, I can. If you want me to wait till later, new business, y'all let me know however you want it to go about it.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we add those two items to new business.
Okay, motion to add. I hear a second.
Second.
Second, so, tell us again with the, oh, I'm sorry, any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to just quit. Can we just quit and take him up while he's up?
Yeah, let's get it done.
Let's just take it out, take, knock it out of the way right now.
We're spending too much time on protocol and dragging things out.
Do you wanna change your motion?
Yeah, we, uh, make a motion that we talk about it now and get it done with.
Okay, I hear a second. Second from Barbara there. Okay. Yes, sir, go ahead.
All in favor?
So, the first thing is, is I have to order two new radar units. One of them's for the new patrol car that's coming in. One of them is for the one we got last year. We've tried to use the radar for that one, but it's twelve years old. It's obsolete. It keeps breaking down. So, uh, for two new radar units, it's thirty-eight hundred dollars. Um, so that's the first thing.
What kind do you get?
Stalker.
Stalker twos?
Stalker, yeah. Stalker duels, yeah. Twos, yeah. Uh, and then the next thing is, is to order the equipment for the new patrol car that's already been placed on. We're, um, roughly eighty-five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Ballpark.
Getting this in the budget?
Yeah, everything's already in my budget. It's just I gotta go ahead and order this stuff 'cause it's probably gonna take a month, two, three months for this stuff to come in.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion approved, second. Any discussion?
Can we split those bills up?
What do you mean?
Two upper items?
It's two different companies.
There's two different companies.
Two, two different companies. One of them's from On Duty Depot for eighty-five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The other's from Stalker Radar. Sorry.
Yeah, that was the same. We split those two.
Yeah.
For voting. Okay.
Would you like to change your, your motion or not?
I'll re-motion to vote on separately.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll vote on the second.
So, the first motion would be then for On Duty Depot, eighty-five hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
I'll motion on the On Duty Depot.
I hear a second.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on that?
Hold on. Who seconded that?
Me.
And it was eighty-five hundred?
Yeah, are you, was that?
Oh, lovely.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said all motion. You didn't say exactly what you were motion.
Motion approved.
Okay, we have motion and second approved. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, what's the second one, chief?
Second.
Motion to approve, second one for the Stalker Radar.
Okay.
So, how much is it, chief?
Thirty-eight hundred dollars.
For thirty-eight hundred dollars. We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed. I don't like radar.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're getting wasted. I really have to.
Caps are getting carved out of that though, don't we? That's all I have.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
You did just do that for that, did you? Yeah, I did, absolutely.
You made that motion to, to make that that way?
I don't, I don't, I.
I was just, I just wanted to see.
Absolutely.
All right, we go on to, uh, Public Works. Les, do you have anything to share with us?
We got a problem with grass. People want grass in the road. We need to do something about it.
And there is law against that.
Put off to another meeting, or a special call meeting. We need to do something.
Unless there is, it's, there's an ordinance against that. We need to make that really clear.
Do something. 'Cause I got pictures here.
Is that something, chief?
I'm here.
Is that, I know you didn't take all this training to be a grass patrolman, but is that something they can address and just ask the people first or give them a warning or something?
We would try that. I, I'll say this, they, people don't call and complain too much to us about that. I think I've had one call and complaint probably on it in the last three, four months maybe. So, if we are notified, we'll do the best we can. But I'll just go ahead and tell you, there's probably other bigger things to worry about too than that, but we'll try to do as much as we can. I'm not gonna say we won't. Do everything we can to help.
Well, let's go ahead and finish what you was telling me about getting into storm drains, which I understand.
Well, when the motor grass, they blow down the road. Well, when it rains, it washes it all right down on the storm drain. Well, their house starts flooding. Well, the city's drains stopped. Well, we go out there, guess what's over that drain? Their grass. Getting, where we clean a curb out, we going next morning, they blow it out in the road. Well, no, told us no good, you know, clean a curb out.
Okay, do we?
I don't care who it is.
Chief, are, are there, there, after the warning, can you give fines or how, how would we approach that?
I guess it would depend on how the ordinance is rolled up here. I don't have that in front of me to look at. It would have to be some kind of a pardon there in reference to if there's any kind of punishment.
We'll have to look it up. I'm not sure if there's a fine right now for that. Yes, sir.
Would it be easier if we actually, we talked about this before, about having a codes enforcement officer instead of using one of our law enforcement officers to, to handle that? I think we, we would need something like that.
Let me add something there. I was talking to her at the beginning of all this. I don't mean to interrupt myself in y'all's discussion.
Then why are you?
Uh, what, what I talked about the codes enforcement thing, I, I'd been talking to some other municipalities. I, I told y'all I represent Monterey, and there had been discussion about using a shared codes enforcer. Uh, because Monterey maybe doesn't need a full one. Baxter doesn't need a full one. I don't know if you guys need one that's full-time.
We don't.
Either. Um, and there was a skin, I talked to Baxter's attorney about it. He had brought it up to me, uh, to take back to Monterey to see if they were interested in. There was talk about it. There was another municipality that was wanting to get into it, but I don't, for whatever reason, they didn't. Um, and it just kinda died where that was at. So, it might be a situation where you guys could benefit from having a shared one. I understand Monterey might be a little bit up the road, but Monterey don't need much of, many hours of the codes enforcer. From my time, when I've kind of been aware of this situation, it's hard to find a code enforcer 'cause they wanna be paid full-time and it's hard to pay a codes enforcer full-time for part-time work. Um, so, it might be, Baxter was very interested in it. They were just up the road. I know Monterey was interested in it. They very much need a codes enforcer. It might be a situation in which we could collectively, 'cause I know that there was a job opening for a codes enforcer. It was like seventy thousand dollars or something. There's no way that one individual municipality can pay like seventy thousand for a codes enforcer. So, the idea was to kind of break it up, you know, pro-rata the share of, you know, however much you pay is, how many hours you get a week of that person, so on and so forth.
Yes, sir.
But we also have to look at it more with that jurisdictional codes enforcement. That's learn all the ordinances and stuff for Monterey, all the ordinance stuff for here. You're talking about someone that's gonna be way out there learning all this stuff. It's probably not gonna happen. I, where do you go? Chief, do you think a part-time codes enforcement will work or do you think a full-time?
I think it's part-time.
Well, what I'm saying, if, if we, let's say, just for example, we use one, we hire them onto the law enforcement set so they can write citations, and then when they're not codes enforcing, that would give you an extra person to patrol and stuff like that, but we'd give them the same salary as a patrolman, but their primary duties would be codes enforcement.
Well, and, and this all actually comes under your jurisdiction as the recorder and, and the planning commission also. So, and we have talked, yes, and go ahead, and then I've got some.
Well, just another thought, 'cause that might take a while to get, to find that person, and I know Les needs help now. Is it, is there something we could, could we add a line to our water bill? Could we send out a letter asking citizens to take care of it themselves, that it is an ordinance, and go ahead and get some action going on it?
I, I agree with that completely. I think good, nice, dably thing to do is just ask them to, uh, if somebody blows their grass up, send them a forty-two cent letter, and that'll save us a lot of money.
I don't think we need to put it on the police officers.
I don't think he's gonna, police officer.
No, I send the letters.
Yeah, just send, just send them a nice, a nice letter. Hey, do you mind not blowing your grass out there? And do it again, then we'll, we'll deal with it at that time, but I mean, it's, you don't need to spend a bunch of money on fifty-five.
That's not what I meant. I meant he shouldn't have to enforce.
I know what you meant. I didn't take it wrong.
Okay.
I'll, I'll say this too. We, we'd be more happy to help as much as we can.
And Brett has been great when I've had to call him.
Anytime Stan Yeller ever needs me to go talk to somebody, there's been a house that we went and I spoke to and we try to help them, you know, solve any issues. Uh, so, if there's anything serious, by all means, let us know. I mean, we'll try to do the best we can. I just.
Sam, did you?
I just wondered, Les, Eddie, Smith County Insider, could y'all maybe work together with a little article for the, a very, very short article explaining the problem, put it in the Courier and on Smith County Insider, explaining why we're, we're not trying to be bad people, but if y'all could maybe work together and get something put together.
And there's also been several motorcyclists who've asked us about this too, 'cause it's.
Most people were.
Motorcycles freaks with by it. I mean, the lights out there rots.
Yes, sir.
It does, but it also, a free way to do that is put it on the Towne of Carthage too, uh, the website and Facebook. Just ask. I mean, everybody's gonna see that. That's a whole lot better than somebody doing it and then sending them a hundred dollar.
Ask everybody out there.
Well, I was gonna finish, uh, a hundred dollar fine because they, I don't, I mean, I'm not about that kind of stuff. I'd rather just ask them first.
And, and it's not in mine, and he's not either. We work really well.
Just talk to people.
Talk to people.
I think that's a lot better.
Can you put it on the water bill? Can you put something?
I don't have anything to do with water bill.
We only have so many, so many.
I know it's a small space, but everybody gets a water bill.
I don't, if you're automated.
Asking is better than threatening.
Look at it.
Yeah.
So, we'll let this.
Mine's automated.
We'll work together with Les.
I should look at it. I know.
To the codes enforcement, you might remember some time ago, we had a gentleman that came here who does that. He has a lady who's trained with him who's also come to us and talked about it. They have to have international codes to be able to do that, and that's pretty, it's, 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 in most places, the building inspector will sometimes do the codes. That's not the case here. That's, that's why, as he was saying, we were saying it's hard to find a codes person 'cause they wanna do, they wanted to be the building inspector at the same time. Yes, sir.
Maybe we can put that on the agenda to talk about some other time, but Public Works would be good to move on, I think.
That's good. I think you've got a good point there. Okay.
Can I, can I ask one question about the bill? Is, is, why do we use that card format when the gas bill, electric bill is on a different?
I have that in.
Is there a reason?
There, and then they were asked. Little thing.
No, I think that's worth looking into. I think it's a new agenda item on my next meeting. No emergency meeting for it, or maybe even pay online.
Well, we don't have that set up yet, I think.
Well, there's still people that, that can't do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Well, by saying that, still set up a bill, we should be able to put it on the agenda for next month.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not. I agree with you.
That's our, that's our finance. We'll talk, y'all can talk about it too.
I'll make a quick motion since we can do this, um, that we go ahead and add to the agenda next month as we talk about our billing format for the water.
Okay, thank you.
It was a motion.
Les?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That was a motion.
That was a second.
Do you need a second?
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor adding the billing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Les, was there anything else you?
No.
Okay, thank you. Derek's not here. Water plant is, there we are.
Um, I, I don't have a formal report. Everything's running, has a sure or something. No use is always good, you say. Um, you want me to bring that up?
Sure.
Yeah.
I, I asked the council, some of the council members to, uh, bring up a proposal I've got. Um, I'd like to, and I, I think we've discussed this and we have included it in this year's budget, but I'd like to get a forklift for the water plant in order to, uh, allow me to receive basically my bleach right now in a different kind of container. If I can, if, since bleach is a corrosive liquid, these, these companies won't put it on their lift gate and unload it for us. So, I cannot use that product unless I can unload it myself. So, what I had proposed was, uh, was a used forklift in, in good working condition and you want me to? Most to approve the water plant to have a forklift or look into. And he's, I believe he set up to nine thousand dollars. I'll, I'll give you all the details, whatever y'all.
Sure. Second.
Do we have a motion second? Any discussion on that?
Um, real quick, like, we're spending nine thousand dollars, real quick, and I don't know anything about this yet.
It's in your budget, right?
It is in the budget. We, we actually approved fifteen thousand in the budget, but I'm trying to keep it under the ten thousand dollar bid process, and, and the reason for that is, I didn't realize this when I started looking into getting one of these. Um, I, I, I think you, it's, it's getting harder to find them. Number one, parts are, are impossible. So, when these things, used ones are, are repaired and put up for sale, they're gone the next day. So, we've looked at two or three so far. I actually had a guy call me yesterday afternoon and, uh, he's got one that I can go look at tomorrow. If I have to wait till another month to a council meeting though, he's probably not gonna hold it for me. So, what I'm asking for is, is to, is to give me the authority to make a deal on this one if it's what we need and suits our purposes. Uh, a new forklift would be thirty to thirty-five thousand. So, this, this is a, uh, a mid-two thousands model, and it'll do everything we need. Uh, the one I'm looking at tomorrow. Now, however, if I get there and I don't like what I see, I'm not doing it. So, I just need to, I need the authority to make a move in a timely. So I just need to, I need the authority to make a move in a timely fashion or I'll never get one.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget. It's already been approved.
More than that, more than that amount.
Fifteen was approved and I'm going to try to keep it as low as I can. And that number that I give you is approximate. I haven't discussed the difference, cost, and I, and it's still negotiable. So maybe I can get it down a little bit more.
So we're going up to nine thousand, what are you thinking?
Approximately.
Approximately, so let's go ten.
No, if you go ten, I have to go through the state law. I have to.
About nine, 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 nine.
Yeah. Let's keep it under that.
All right.
I'm not a bigger fan of the state right now anyway.
So I'd amend mine to end my motion to let them spend up to.
Do you want to amend it or rescind it?
Rescind and amend, or rescind and.
You can rescind.
I can amend the amount?
You can, but you got to vote on it and then vote on.
It'll be quicker just to rescind.
Rescind and remake.
Now we're worried about time.
We're worried about being up to nine thousand.
I rescind my motion. I'd like to make a new one that the water department would be able to, namely, Rusty would be able to spend up to nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Okay.
And ninety-nine cents.
We have a second. We have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
All right, Mr. Ricky.
We don't have anything right now. Y'all don't ask any questions.
It's all good. It's way for the plan. That's good to know.
We got a little things going on, but nothing major right now.
All right.
Still going downhill, isn't it?
Hey, still, yeah.
That's a good thing, right?
One thing, one thing there, I forgot to add one. The reason I'm wanting to do this is because I've done negotiated a thirty percent cheaper price on, on the.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's a good one.
I left that out.
And you said it would pay for itself and almost.
It'll pay for seven under two years and then we'll be probably, and it's only, it's something that'll be used like every two weeks. So it shouldn't give us years of service.
Okay, thank you too, Ricky. I appreciate it.
Sorry.
That's all right. Chief, hi, fire department.
Hopefully y'all helped my written report. I was a little late this afternoon today. The only other thing that I have is some of us are planning to make sure that if any mountain, Alabama, huge thing, with the new fire. Will I be buying? There'll be a lot of hoops to jump through before we can do that. A little on the loop. Just want to make y'all aware of that.
So hopefully.
And again, it's a budget denied.
And hopefully we'll get lucky, right?
It's over ten thousand.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you. Okay, CFO Scott.
Everybody has a copy of the financial report. Just call your attention to page one. This is a vision that I'll start putting in the report. But it kind of summarizes all of our existing capital outlay projects that we are talking about or have already planned and scheduled. And it gives you an idea of where we're at with all of that. The thing that I highlight there is to note, right now on our books, what we're looking to do is three point three million dollars from that general fund and four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from appropriation in kind of the water sewer fund. So there's detail there that we can discuss and go forward. Usually just funding sources and how much comes from appropriation. The next page, page two, is just a visual of kind of where we're at with general fund, about how we're in good shape. We're still tracking right along with where we want it to be. Pages three through twenty-five are the financial statements for general fund, special revenue funds and the water sewer fund. We are still in a very liquid position on both water sewer and the general fund. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to discuss any of that. Out of number three on my report speaks about reports on debt obligations. That is a, we already knew that we had the I and I loan approved, of course, to move forward with that project. We're already aware that we have the loan for the Fugel Alley water line approved. But we are required by the state to give you these reports on debt obligation and we have given those to you. And Mary and I will sign and send these on to the Department of Loan and Financing, so we have five of those. Be glad to answer any questions on those. As far as the financing part goes.
Any questions?
The next item is part of what I found while working on these report of debt obligations. It's been some time since we have reviewed our debt management plan. And all that plan is, is a recommendation to say, okay, when it comes to short-term, long-term debt, capital leases, operating leases, if we were ever to entertain doing a bond issue, that we would have some kind of guidance about what we would do. The most important portion of the debt management plan is talking about how much money I think we should borrow. I am more conservative than what M-TAS gave to us and so I backed that down. I've also put in our plan that we would keep an eye on the current ratio, which is current assets to current liabilities. Meaning in a year's time, how often we can pay our debts off in one year's time with the money we had. You know, in the general fund, we've got a fifty-one to one ratio and we can pay our current debts fifty-one times. With the current assets we got. Water sewer fund, we can pay our current debts five times, okay? With the current assets we have. But the debt policy is something that we would look at every year, okay? And we would update it when we were doing the budget for the next year. It is a living dynamic document, but it pretty much just gives us, this is our plan. Most of it won't apply to what we're going to do. Don't envision us doing bonding at this point in time. But it does speak to, hey, we got limits on how much money we're going to borrow. And I've been very conservative with that because I'm not going to let us, if I can help, get in a bad cash flow situation because we're in a good cash flow now. My predecessors have all been good work with that. So that is a resolution. You guys will entertain that later. We can speak more to it. Purchasing policy ordinance, that has come up during the budget workshop. We've been working on that and working with supervisors. Gone to M-PAS with it. M-PAS gave us a nineteen-page document. It was tremendously thorough, but we felt like we could do it a little bit simpler. And that's what you have as far as the ordinance tonight, and I can discuss that more when we get to discussion. We have those documents and I'll discuss those. Entertaining any questions since you might have at this point. If I have a formal discussion on this. This is awesome. If you need something else, you gotta let me know and I'll be like, yeah, I'll lay it out.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving now into unfinished business. We've already, that was the first item, so we'll move to. Oh, I'm sorry. Ract report says, well, some of this will be covered by, by Evan's.
I was just saying.
Get to that, so.
Management plan reservation.
Evan? We want to talk to, we've talked about the walking track. Do you want to talk to?
That's all we got, Grant.
Yeah, yeah. So the other stuff will be on business tonight, but.
I talked to David. He's going to come tomorrow and fill. There's a hole down there. It's called single barrels. He's coming tomorrow and fill that in. He's guaranteed me that. He is going to come back next week. It's supposed to be dry from now, all the next week it says. So he's telling us that he'll be here next week to finish rough, or not rough grading. He's actually trying to finish grading. That's why he's left because right now it's still wet underneath where he's filled quite a bit in. He can't really get it graded to where it needs to be. And as far, and if y'all ever sewed a yard, you're aware of this, you really don't, but seed down and straw and all the work and then it come a flood and it's in the carmel. So he's trying to be gracious with when he can actually sew it and straw it and get it to actually sprout sort of a hole. So that'll be a good finished product once it gets done. So that's what he's saying again, we're at the end of this month to, for him to be in here and for Park to be back open. That's all I got with Park.
Hey, great, thank you. The only other grant, yes, sir?
After you finish. After you finish.
Oh, the other, only other grant we have right now, grant grant, is the pump station and Rusty, I think we're moving forward with that as far as we know with the last.
Well, yeah, we, we had a Zoom meeting with the engineers and it is moving forward, but for whatever reason, we are behind on it too. I don't know how this works, but we always seem to get behind on these projects, but it is moving forward and we're waiting just right now for the T-DEC final approval and the, I don't remember if this was, this was, was this A C A or what was this long?
This is A R C.
A R C.
Yeah, it's a fifty-fifty. Part, part of the problem with T-DEC is you have to go through every environmental report. We even had to see if there were Indian barrel grounds. So you have to go through all the environmental stuff with them and it just slows down, yeah, a bit. But I think we're getting ready, pretty ready to start.
The bid process will be starting next time.
We put that in the paper, so, okay, thank you. And then we go into unfinished business, but that was number one, yes, sir.
That's what I was going to ask, if we could remove one, number one, possibly number three. I don't know what, if there's anything else you want to do with that. Councilman Babcock wanted to.
I'll remove number three. We'll add it to the agenda for January's first meeting of January.
So we will. So we've dealt with those two. Main Street, Evan, our engineer, has a big show and telling once the show is high.
Yeah, I'm going to try. It's going to be hard.
Put together everything that y'all suggested and once it's, if it's approved here, we'll move to planning commission next.
I'll link these for after the meeting. No, look.
You want to use.
And it's going to be, it's going to be hard to see. I took any of y'all's comments from last time I gave it to y'all about the structure. So basically we come through here.
What street are we on?
Main Street.
Main Street. Cross Street.
Main Street, second. So the only thing y'all wanted to change, which y'all want to make this for sure, a travel lane with a stop condition for like a good turn and going through. The light has to be changed, of course.
Are you saying a turn lane?
No, that lane is gone. It's going to be a travel lane. It's going to be a northbound lane now.
But the light will be redone.
The light will be revised because right now it's going to try to turn people.
And now it's going to be with this, it'll be the turn when they have the opportunity to turn.
Correct.
Still when they have, when the rest of the time.
Kind of like a stop sign.
You got the turn lane a second now so people start turning on second.
The crosswalk has been brought in at a ninety-degree angle. That was requested instead of bringing it at an angle. And that's about it. I mean, that's the two, that's the changes y'all wanted to see from the original. Basically, y'all got to approve it here. He's got to go to planning. They got to approve it. And we're just trying to get this done so Vulcan can get the paper and instruct it.
We, who was first?
You were.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, does that include the parking difference by the post office?
Well, the parking is post office. I can't do anything about that because it's a sidewalk change.
Yeah.
Y'all was wanting to get into looking about. Maybe moving the sidewalk over on, on property. So that's really not part of the, the street system. It'd be a sidewalk versus where do y'all own and where do they own kind of thing. So it'd get into some property and sidewalk changes. The lane's still going to, I mean, the width still going to be the, that you've always had down through here.
It just didn't add, we were talking about adding more parking spaces.
Yeah, he's had, he's wanting to add like two, a couple of feet, but that would wind up changing the sidewalk.
Okay.
That, that's not going to affect this plan more. This is the only street.
In relation to that, I think I suggested, I don't know if it was to you, we talked about it. Like the, the street that's between the post office and the courthouse. Has put angle parking in toward the post office.
That's what I was talking about.
And then angle parking down like it is now on the other end of the courthouse. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant.
That's what I meant.
Parking here.
Adding parking on the side of the post office. Instead of the people having to cross across the street.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're talking about this lane.
Yes, yes.
Second West.
Yeah.
This is wide enough for parallel parking.
Yeah. Well, that would help out as far as the, you know, people coming down Main Street.
Having to park right in the front.
That way they're not parking in the front and stepping out.
That's a really good idea.
Some, some probably still will.
Yeah, but I mean.
Yeah, but it would help.
It would help out with some.
Second Avenue West is wide enough for parallel. Main Street in front of the post office is not.
Or we could, we could actually swap both sides, put parallel on the side for the courthouse because that's not used as much.
Yeah, that's the side that's not used as much.
And then put the, all the angle parking on the side with the post offices on that side.
That'd be great.
Would that be feasible?
Let me look at it again because I'm thinking you're going to get into some pretty good grade changes right there. Parking is not the same as street, so, in other words, I think this is really headed down.
It is. It's angled pretty steep.
So it makes see what you're allowed to have on, on a street.
Yes, sir.
Oh, and, and just, I would look at it as like the same, it's going to be the same situation as how you park in front of the post office on the size of post office. It adds parking and I don't think we need to put, just have that country parallel parking where you can pull and pull out. There aren't no lines or nothing like that. It's just that white line and pulling right beside it.
Well, that would add several spaces too.
Yeah, definitely would. I just didn't know if you could swap it.
Yeah, why, why would that take up street if you just swapped?
Oh, it's not trying to take up street. It's the, it's how much it's sloping side to side. So in other words, your street's normally two percent that you drive on unless you're in a curve. Then you get some super, but if that thing's pointing down at ten percent, then you try to start making people travel on it.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's like if you take one of these hills, it's easy to kind of pull up to the side of a house on a hill but people start parallel parking in a hill and pulling out. It's just something with an angle on a hill, it's harder to.
I don't think it's going to be that much of a difference.
But we get more use out of it being the other on the other side.
The question is, do we want to prove this and move it on to planning so they can get started?
Can I motion to have a two-minute recess so we can all look, or five-minute recess, just so we can all look at this real quick? Make sure we are good with this.
I think that's a good idea. I've got a question beforehand. Quick question. We talked about changing the angle of pulling in parking on the second, second and third and third and the alley.
He did that, I believe.
You did do that? Okay, good.
Yeah, so it's easier to see.
Barbara, did you? We removed the crosswalk in front of the courthouse?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to suspend Roberts. Yeah, well, I didn't really have an official, I was asking if I could.
Well, do you want to do that?
Yeah, motion, well, I'm going to do it differently. Motion to suspend Roberts for five minutes so we can all look at it.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm going to get one. I'm going to put in front of y'all. This is that way we can actually talk.
Yeah.
See, what we were talking about, Bill was talking about is putting it over here, the angle on this side and then putting parallel on this side.
So people can park right here.
Yeah, they are.
They're all the way up through here.
Okay, but no cross or nothing. You can just park wherever you want to right here. That's what I couldn't understand is why this one couldn't be here and this one here. I know you've explained it. I just don't understand.
And it's like.
I can't remember, but I've been out there. I'm thinking it's, it's heading, it's heading downhill.
It just throws you off a little bit.
Yeah, see, this, it's kind of big break, just break for a corner right here. I'm thinking, so if you got traffic trying now to come.
Parallel here and then you got other ones.
So you can't put this.
Plus, of course, plus, I don't know how thick, this, this could just be paved thick enough for parking.
This would be the place where everybody parks and then understood, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, and it would help out a little bit.
At least we do have this right here.
So parallel parking, by the way, I go to A.
That would be between us and you.
I can't do it.
But we, they, the owner. He would have to give up some.
I'm not sure. Y'all might, y'all driveway may be.
The reason I went around this is we're opening, I'm opening my door.
Well, tech, I mean, I'll say this.
Technically, I would rather.
Because I mean, Nikki, you can get your sidewalks.
Slower. I'm sure even if you. That block you know is a hundred thousand.
You have to wait for them to stop going.
I mean, I think it's a good idea.
I do hate that this one's still angled. That drives me crazy.
That's about the only thing.
I like that idea put in there, but parallel parking here just is going to be the same as we have right here.
I have never, I'm just saying for myself, I've never parallel parked. We can move it over there. I drive around the block in there until there's a spot right here. Yeah, till they move down a little bit, yeah.
And I prefer. But I think it's worth asking to go back.
And we're doing away with it. Bad idea. Very bad idea.
But I mean, we're not in a rush to do this.
So let's look at it. Let's look at that idea. And then move it up. Here's, here's the other thing that I was. Here's, here's the other thing that I was. So take that, see how they.
That's what my count.
Probably not.
I thought you said that it technically.
That's why the sidewalk down here.
No, they still wanted to go with it.
That's my memory. Crosswalk into that sidewalk, because nothing's happening here anyways. And so you take crosswalk, go straight.
Y'all say y'all.
This is great now.
Extend, extend the sidewalk, we're leaving a turn lane here, right?
And then just go straight.
These two are needed.
We could do that too.
This one right here, probably not.
That idea is what we're looking at.
So where the loose side, if they come down here, they're gonna wait for these.
This would be.
Only thing we have to do is keep getting this lane so you're not parking down the track.
Oh, there is a turn, okay, I'll get it.
Cause right now you can still park in that spot, but if you had to.
Why are you wanting to do parallel versus pull in? Why couldn't you do pull in on both sides?
Can't do it on both sides.
You can't do it on both sides.
Not enough room for pulling on both sides?
And like I told him.
What about angling the spots?
Like I told him, that angle parking may only be paved deep enough for, for parking, not for, for travel lanes, so it could be a thinner amount of paving. Because most time when you pave parking, it's a lot thinner than, than a roadway.
To the other side, that's what I don't understand, because the other side would still be parking. I worked my out, this side would still be parking, it would just be this here and these angles. So you wouldn't be traveling on it, you'd be parking.
Some of it you would.
But I thought we talked about moving the sidewalk before too.
Yeah, we're looking at a huge quantity, I'd say just do it like this.
I just want, I know we talked about it, I just.
Here's what we can do down there, these two are travel lanes and this sidewalk being over here.
Just so y'all know, second don't matter in our project.
Over here is a sidewalk too, so let's relook at all that.
We talked about that later.
Yeah, they're not restrapping.
Is there a parking spot right here? There's a black car sitting there.
They're gonna be adding this. This is, this is, this is a. I think this is basically been an approach for years of a business that just never got.
They're only paving and strapping.
So nobody designed this street to have this come out like that.
So basically, we're taking the turn lane out from here to here, then it ends up back up here, right?
Why do we leave?
There's not gonna be, they're gonna come off this road.
Cause we can actually put parking all the way down this whole street.
Like this is gonna be built up.
That's parallel down there.
That's what I was thinking, just do that.
This is where, this is where they dip down the water line, quarter inch or half inch. Since the water line's already on board and all that, we'll stop the project here and then do the water line, we do all this, after we do the water line.
Which one? Oh, it is, you can't see the reason.
Yeah, I thought we planned on, on angling these parts too.
Their ramps from the.
I thought we was gonna angle it for like, if they're at least.
I was leaving these alone, just again, they won't be part of the lane structure, but y'all want it, I mean, you've got, I think people are using it.
I'm just saying the water.
Well, I'll say. No, they're stuck.
Yeah, we made them pretty tight.
Yeah, but put your back down into a.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I said, these got, these got changed.
They literally want to get changed.
When will that happen?
What we could do is we could remove whatever plan.
And you're gonna put this stick back on that lane right there where you can make this.
This is, right here, they're taking it out. Smack right into somebody coming around this corner from here.
That's what I'm gonna ask you here in a second.
I don't see any parking there at all.
It's weird.
Well, you got parallel parking down here too, and it's tight.
That's me right there, and honestly, I don't think it's a bad idea to take out half of it, because it is too big.
They park on both sides.
Need to have it on one side or the other, and honestly, I think Larry uses the, the parking more than.
Well, he's retired now, is he still parking there?
He is, but. Well, and I don't wanna make city policy based on, but I know that, I know that this is used a lot more than mine. Now David uses that a lot.
Oh, yeah. You gotta pull way up or down.
You guys do, no, they're not letting the sides, but I mean, he.
That part don't bother people.
That's what he was saying too, that the sides, none of this is gonna change on this project, they're only gonna strip this, just so y'all know. This line's not gonna be here.
There is.
He's not changing it, we have to do that later down the line, cause they're not strapping that on this project, just Main Street.
Is there?
Just wanna make sure.
You're like parallel park down here.
We were throwing on this stuff, I asked a bunch of questions over here too, but.
I didn't show it.
Do it, well, I'd say with.
I didn't show it, but they do.
You got a different.
He didn't show it.
Yeah, because it's not wide enough.
So we are talking about this.
They do, they do.
He's saying on this side.
That's what I was wanting to know.
I didn't show it, I don't show it unless it can be done.
We're not doing anything on this side, just this side, or just Main Street.
Only Main Street's on this project, so nothing else. Now, this was just so y'all have a study. But the actual strapping project's only gonna be Main Street.
Should be.
So, so if y'all want to change any of the side roads, we can do that.
It won't be on this project.
It won't be on the paving project, no.
So this one, we can add that, we can switch it.
You can do anything on these side roads anytime, it's only Main Street.
So technically, we will.
On a break, let me ask you a question about the whole paving.
Okay.
We need a new water line.
Yes.
Does it make sense to pave, then put a water line in?
No, what I've told, what I've told the city, um, uh, is what I would do is I would pave up, I'd pave a foot over this white line.
This way?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm dead here.
Or, I'd pave a foot to the white line, and then I would not pave this all the way down through here.
So basically, it's kinda like a gutter?
No, you're just gonna leave shoulder for them to do the water line later, that way you're not paving a mill, you're not paving the.
The water line is not here.
Not the water line, right down this.
That's what I was trying to figure, just how people thought it was on Main Street.
Main Street, Main Street.
Digging along the side of that, pushing down the new pavement, all that good stuff.
No, 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 it'll be exactly the same, you're just not re, you're not repaving, resurfacing the shoulder.
If we repaved this whole thing and missing that one section, how many people get here to work on that section, they gotta drive on the new pavement, right?
No, they're gonna put a track hole right in that lane to layer the water line.
The track hole's not that wide.
No, the lane is, that's, that's almost a whole travel lane.
That's like the.
They are brown lines down there.
They parallel park right now, isn't it?
Cause they just gotta cut down and fill back up.
It'll be exactly the same, you, the only thing is this will be real black, that'll be great until y'all did the water line, and then, then they'll pave that section on the water line.
I got that, I'd rather.
It's, I mean, they can pave it, it's just you gotta pave the millage.
I'd rather just put the water line and then pave the whole thing and do it right.
That's great.
Well, then you're gonna have to.
It's gonna take a year and a half.
Yeah, you'll have to redo, you'll have to just cut.
Like I said, I would rather have the water line done instead of hoping that we get it paved this far, they do this, we get it matched up right, everything seals perfect.
May I interject here, man, if, if both engineers have kinda talked about this, what Evan is suggesting makes sense because we've got a great price from, from Vulcan right now. What he's talking about is, and the other engineer who does water lines all over the country says, yes, you just, where your white line comes here, there's the space between the shoulder and that. All they do is they pave over through that, then they come back later with this company, and they do it all the time, they just go right down that line, they put in the new line, they gravel it, and then they asphalt it over, and he said, you can't tell there's a seam there.
We, we have a lock-in price for whenever they come back to do that.
So is the water line and the paving gonna be.
I'll approve it two hundred and twenty something thousand.
No, no, no.
You know, he waited here.
The rocks, they know.
It's gonna go up.
It could cost you. The paving, paving is gonna be one thousand.
Evan, let me explain, cause I don't think.
Do we need to go back into session?
No.
Just making sure, we can suspend rules and talk regularly.
Yeah, we might need to go back into session to do that.
We just went into.
I'm just saying.
But, but just to, just so you know, just so you know, it's not as simple as just laying a line, you gotta go through TDEC, you gotta go, it's like all, it's like we were with the water pump station, it's gonna take them a good six months to seven months, just to get it approved. So if we can go ahead and pave it, knowing that we can, it's, Main Street is the only place we'll do this, that's all the other roads are not wide enough, but Main Street is wide enough that we can run the line after the fact and still have the paving, and once they finish, you won't be able to tell the difference.
So, so you're saying, so you're saying that we could still pave all the way down here.
We should, we should suspend Roberts' rules, we should be out of session, we're not out of session.
No, I said we should have a session, they're not, they don't know what we're saying, that should be, they should be able to hear us, they should be able to hear what came on with this.
We need to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I didn't, I didn't, I wanna make sure that they could hear what we're talking about.
That's what I'm saying, that's what.
That's the only, that was my only issue, I wanna make sure.
That's why we didn't take a recess.
Um, so let's, real quick, I think what she's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, we can do this whole paving plan and still do the water line down the road, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna jack it up that much. And if we do the water line project first, we're looking at probably.
Seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand.
Well, dollars, I think it's honestly gonna be a year and a half, so we're looking at twenty twenty-three before we even have it done, and then in twenty twenty-three, we pay.
And the citizens really do wanna pay.
Well, the, the only question I had was this, we've got a bid to, to pay that, I'm good with that, when we bid the water line, is that gonna include them paving on top of that?
Yes, yes, yes.
That was the question I had.
So I think.
That's what I'm saying, if not, you're gonna do it, and then they're gonna have to come rip it back up, why would you want to?
That's the only question I had.
And in addition, just let me, cause Les and I, we are going to, we are going to put together a timetable with Public Works and some engineers, here's what we go through, maybe Smotherman next, and we're gonna do all, what is the most important line to change out, they know what they are, and, and then Scott's gonna help, help us put together a plan, how do we get that money? Cause we're talking about millions of dollars to, to replace all the water lines in this town, so we gotta get a financial time plan to get it doing this.
In regards to this, real quick, cause I know a couple of y'all were listening to what we were saying over here, we are talking about moving this crosswalk a little bit over and a little bit over, and move, keeping a sidewalk in here so that it keeps it straight, so it's not this diagonal stuff that we've been having problems with before, cause this looks nice, this is gonna fix that. We could bring the sidewalk out a little bit.
Bring it out past the parking?
Past the parking, where, where, see where that, those lines are there, just bring it out a little bit there, so it's a straight crosswalk there.
What would it take to move it down to here and straight?
He's got a column in your way.
There's a column in the way?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I had.
So, so we can't do it that way, more than likely?
I mean, I could avoid, avoid his column, but I'd have to move it, um, northbound.
The column's here, right.
What if we did a crosswalk right here?
That's what I'm saying, I can do it if I move it on down that way.
Okay.
It has to be this side though, cause this is handicap parking right here, this first one is.
Would have to be.
That's handicap?
Yeah, that first space right there is handicap, so it'd have to be right here.
You can draw all over, yes, sir.
So we got a lot to do to be ADA compliant in my opinion, but.
Yeah, that's why.
So let's see what that, yeah.
Yeah.
Around where they're, let's see what that looks like, the other one is, this one looks a little crooked too, can we even that one out?
Which one?
One down here, Ward Avenue.
Your computer messed up it.
It is a little crooked because that's toward the, uh, the existing.
The sidewalk.
It's not bad though.
It's for handicap.
Yeah, well, and the reason I'm saying is.
It's perfect.
There is a handicap one already here.
If it's perfect, yeah, let's move it and make it perfect, we gotta take out a parking spot, do it, let's take out a parking spot, one parking spot.
I'm gonna tell you, they're probably gonna make it ninety degrees when they strap it either, either way.
They're gonna make it ninety degrees?
They're gonna make it straight, is what he's saying.
They will.
It's not gonna be.
I'm saying the road probably will.
It's gonna be straight across, is what he's saying.
Okay.
I'm good. Can we get, must we go match Roberts' rules?
Let's go back in, okay, uh, we're supposed to go back in second, all in favor?
Uh, if you've got revisions, please approve it that way, that way I ain't gonna come back here.
Can I, can I make? Can I make a motion as well that, uh, when we do get this, well, sorry, can I speak? I guess I wanna make a motion. I'd like to make sure when we get that final plan, we put that out so the citizens can see what we're working on, and it's not just between us, but everybody can see what it is that we're planning, so they can know what to expect.
I agree. I'll submit a plan to send to the planning commission. Well, you didn't have a motion, you just had a discussion.
Yeah, well, no, I was gonna say, because we're gonna do, we're gonna do that change and look at that change and send it to the.
Change it.
Yeah.
Well, you know, they, whatever, just, what the planning commission needs is what our final vote, y'all's final vote is.
I, I make a motion to send this plan to the planning commission with the change that we made to the crosswalk.
Okay, a motion to make.
With the, with the parking.
With the change, well.
Well, we cannot, the side streets we have to do separately.
Side streets are made. This is just the Main Street deal.
We can, we can make that motion, yes, we do.
Evan, I mean, is that something you can include or not?
Let's, let's.
It's not what we approved.
The side streets don't matter on this project, because Main Street's always strapping.
You have a sec, you have a second on yours?
Okay.
So Steve, just to.
So we have a motion, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure it's clear, were your motion and approve it with this one change of moving the crosswalk?
One change, moving the crosswalk.
Send it to planning.
Do you have a second on that already?
No.
You second that?
Let me ask a question on that, wait, y'all already seconded, so we go ahead and discuss.
Wait, you can discuss something.
Uh, but you said that took the turn lanes out, is that correct?
It takes the turn lane out from Ward all the way to second. The turn lane, the center now, now becomes an northbound line.
That's a bad mistake.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Again, we made some in here recently.
I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we have.
Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to accept this with the change in the crosswalk there.
To move.
To send it to the planning commission, all in favor? Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, uh, so it passes, we'll send it on next week to the planning commission. Okay, we have, so the next, the next one is the Stevens Building appraisal.
Yes.
Uh, counseling, people, what do you?
Uh, I think what we're worth that is we're just, we wanna see what that building worth in regards to, if we wanna be improving it, if we wanna be selling it, for that appraisal will help us know what the value of that property is, decide how we wanna budget for moving forward, so I think it's.
And how much was it gonna be?
Two thousand.
Two thousand dollars, so, um, so I just, and I wanted to give everybody, you know, a month to think about it, so it's not like a snap decision to spend, it's two thousand bucks, you know? So, um, I don't have any, I guess I should can go ahead and make a motion, and then we can make that discussion, so, uh, motion to approve the two thousand dollar Stevens Building appraisal.
I'll second for discussion's sake.
Okay, your motion and second, any discussion, yes, sir.
I probably should have recused myself, cause I'm good friends with the people that, that did that quote and suggested using them.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'd like to say, now that we've put eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars into the Stevens Building, I think we don't need to spend two thousand dollars for appraisal, it doesn't matter what it's worth, I doubt that we, as a commissioner or as a citizen, vote, so that anyway, that's my opinion, we don't need the appraisal.
Any further discussion?
Um, it's, I mean, it's our, if you have a property, you wanna know what your property's worth, it's, I mean, and it's our due diligence to know what our value of our assets are for the taxpayers, they pay money on it, we're putting money into it, who's to say that, uh, we just put an eight thousand dollar air conditioning unit into a building that's about to collapse possibly, we don't know. And that building's a very old building, it's got a lot of water issues and things like that, I think it's worth getting appraisal to see due diligence.
We were talking two different things, and appraisal tells you how much it costs, a building inspection tells you what's structurally wrong with the building, we're talking two different things.
None, I mean, yes and no, appraisal's gonna tell you what it's worth, if they, if they see these structural issues when they're doing appraisal, it's gonna diminish that value, absolutely, if there's no structural issues, then good deal, we know what our assets are worth, but.
Like I said, I'm just trusting an appraiser to inspect the building.
Would be my question.
Yeah, appraiser to build an inspection.
I would never do that on a property that I, that I.
That's apples and oranges, they don't come in and inspect, they go in there and.
They do what they're getting paid to.
And do comps for just to say, yeah, this is worth this much money, but that's just my opinion, I don't think we can do it.
Any further discussion on that?
I just feel like, and I've said this before, that we should keep the building, because it's an inside venue. Um, that's my stand on it, and I'm not gonna change it.
Okay, yes, sir.
I feel like it's an inside thing, a building that we can use that's not an outside ballpark, or swimming pool, or walking trail, whatever. This is something that's inside. We can, you know, we can use this for, um, different events. Um, I think we could use it more now that the air conditioning's finished. Um, and I just, that's the way I feel.
And it is something that the spot uses for their nonprofit, and the museum does use it for their nonprofit. So it is benefiting the town in those two nonprofits as well, and we don't have any other plans to put money in it or sell it, so the appraisal at this time seems.
And plus the fact that the museum is, you know, I wish it was used more, but it is very nicely done. Um, I think, you know, to move it somewhere else, and I have no clue where it would even go. I just feel like it's in a good location for the school kids to walk down there to it. I mean, it's a great location for that. Um, I just feel like we need to keep it.
Yeah, and again, that's why I was just.
Councilman was next here, Alexander East, and then councilman here.
Uh, all I was gonna say is, and I agree, you said it before I got to, but, um, I, I agree that we should keep it. I don't know why you'd get rid of an asset like that, but I do think it's not an asset if it just sits there. I think we, if we're gonna call it an asset, then it needs to be producing some income so that we can justify putting money into it. That's what common sense would tell you. So I think we need to, as a council, if we're going to keep it, if we vote to keep it, we also need to be looking at plans to utilize it to the best of its ability so that we can generate more income from, from it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll piggyback on that if you need to.
I have something that's going.
I just got a question for Les. Now that the new air conditioning system is in, is there possibly we won't have to do anything to the ceiling? Is it, if it keeps it cool enough or warm, so that way it gets to keep the acoustics and everything?
Turned it on the other day, and it turned that building perfect.
See, so instead of spending the sixteen thousand, we got it done for eight thousand, so we came out ahead on the deal.
Yeah.
Should've got it done for six thousand.
I agree.
I'm just gonna echo that again.
But to your, to your point, councilman.
I did, you know.
Hold on, it's all right.
Didn't do it.
To, to your point, councilman, we've actually had some people already approach us about having productions.
Wonderful.
Want music.
Well, yeah, and also, you know, we've talked about this before, too, uh, the restroom situation. You know, I think Stephen and I have talked about this, um, relocate in a hallway or something where you can get to the restroom in the front vestibule area. Uh, that way we'd have restroom capabilities or whatever, that you could get there to. Um, it's our building, so we can, you know, make it work.
You, you said what you wanna say, okay. Uh, two things. I mean, we're gonna keep this building. You guys wanna keep it. Come up with some ways to use it. Don't, don't just sit there. Nothing happened, so that's what I was thinking. Two, I'm gonna point out why I voted against that air conditioning in the first place, was because I knew that we'd come around and say, we've already put the money into it, so we're gonna do this. That's why I did that. So I just wanted to point that out, like, but anyways.
I think we've kinda lost track of what this discussion is about, is whether we're gonna vote for the appraisal.
Appraisal.
Right. We've gotten way off track.
Okay, any further discussion about the motion? Okay, all in favor of the, paying two thousand for the appraisal, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay.
Sam Wood.
Abstained.
He's abstained.
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 You just wanna do a roll call on it, so it's clear?
Yeah, let's do a roll call. Let's do a real quick old roll call on it. All right, Councilwoman Kannable?
Oppose.
Councilman Backcock?
Oppose.
Councilman Ebo?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Oppose.
Councilman Petty? Abstaining. Chris Marys?
Oppose.
Okay, so, um, the motion fails. Okay, thank you. Um, the next, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit for the nine eleven event.
Second.
Okay, and that, we all know that's nine eleven, and they're gonna be there from eight in the morning through about ten o'clock. So tell everybody to come out if you can, because it's American Legion, and they've got a lot of great speakers and people who were actually first responders there. So all of, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, all right, the management plan, Mr. Zell.
My recommendation is to accept this resolution, and we need to look at it annually. If you have to try to answer any questions, which may have.
And that's CR two oh two one oh nine oh two.
Uh, most important part, as I mentioned to you, is change two of six types and limits of debt. Most important thing, in my opinion, is the limits that we're gonna place on any outstanding debt.
Okay. Do you have your motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes, I agree. Um, as far as that five times annual operating revenue, what does that number come from?
Uh, that operating revenue comes from the annual gross. Five is Scott. My impasse recommended ten. That's too much for me, so I split it in half.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've.
Much more conservative.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. Uh, and another point, I think that's good we're doing this. This is good, putting us under control on our spending and our debt, debt is, yeah, so I like this.
Hey, any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor of approving resolution number CR two oh two one oh nine oh two?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And the next one?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the ordinance. Do you hear a second?
Second, ma'am.
Further discussion, any discussion? Questions or discussion?
Give me, sorry, if you can just hold the vote for a second, just to make sure. This is basically, we're already doing a lot of this, and this is just put in writing, basically.
It's just giving them more, that way they ain't gotta come here.
Yeah, yeah.
Gives us a little more.
Freedom.
Yeah, it gives them a leeway to kinda get their projects taken care of.
All right, yeah. This is, we discussed, this is like three months ago we discussed this.
I think so.
This is that conversation we're talking. We're trying to free some stuff up, a little bit, give our supervisors a little bit more leeway to get stuff, in case there are emergencies and all that. That's what this is.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
I have, make sure clarification. So the section where, in the board minutes where it says authorization of two thousand or more, that won't happen anymore, because we're authorizing.
Ten thousand.
Nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, department leader, CFO, mayor, and goats.
It's gotta be in the budget, is all.
That's right.
Okay. As long as it's in the budget.
That's my, my task to make sure, the department leaders to make sure it's there. That's my role, is just to make sure it fits within the finance part of it, and then it's up to the mayor, department leader, with the heat, so.
And in summary, it's just basically, you know, just so the public knows in summary what we're doing. It's always been two thousand. Anything above two thousand, we approve. We're moving that up to nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, so that way we, we're trusting our department heads to work with instinct. Monies that have already been budgeted, already been allocated, they just have a lot more freedom. They don't have to come to the council board.
Yep, money, money we've already given them to spend, they're allowed to spend.
We've already proven to spend, we're just giving them passing that, so.
And then in the state law, anything over ten thousand, we have to have a formal bidding process, so that's a state's tax.
We're ready to vote?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. Thank you. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. It's an ordinance, so we have to have, what are you reading next?
Yes.
Why didn't you guys throw a lot back?
Pass first, right?
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, the.
We could exit, do we, uh, say we did the workshop, but.
No.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, whatever.
Okay, the next item is personnel policy. Councilman Backcock, did you have?
Yes, ma'am. The reason I put that on there, we voted, what was it, March of last year to change our personnel policy, and we never got a finished copy of that policy when we came back from the attorney's office. So I wanted to see that policy, to see if, to make sure the changes were put in that we implemented.
Well, I, I believe.
Well, I saw the policy came out, and one of the changes hasn't been made.
The one that Danielle sent you?
Yes. It's got the sick time limited to a hundred and twenty days, and we said it's gonna be unlimited sick time.
Well, no, you actually voted a hundred and twenty days. That was, that was in the policy you voted on.
Uh, no way.
You can, you can vote to change it if you want, but that's what we voted on.
Uh, motion to suspend Robert's rules?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Aye.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Excuse me, excuse me. Any opposed?
I honestly can't recall. I apologize, but I can't recall. That's fine. Does anyone remember when we changed that policy to what the sick hours were supposed to be? I do.
Well, may I, may I give the history? It was ninety hours, I mean, ninety days, and so you, you upped it to a hundred and twenty, because that's an, that's an.
No, ma'am, we went to unlimited.
It's been a hundred and twenty since I've worked here, ma'am.
No, I don't believe if you look at the, look at the old policy, it wasn't.
How long has it been a hundred and twenty, Les? I'm, I'm not kinda hard to government this time. It's been a hundred and twenty since I've worked here, I think.
Been a long time, ma'am.
Can I offer a suggestion? I, I mean, just say it.
I think we talked about it during that workshop, but we can certainly revisit it if you don't think that's.
Why don't you show, like, put this on the agenda next month and show what you were expecting versus what it is, so that we can look at it in detail?
Yeah, because I don't think we, we should go back to the minutes. We all sat here and talked about it with Mr.
Can we not go back to more?
Not in the workshop, there's not minutes. I wasn't here for the workshop.
Okay, then we voted on, we said, because it wasn't fair to employees such as Les and the people that had their cap at so many hours. Because it doesn't cost the city anything. When they retire, that goes towards their retirement.
Retirement.
It doesn't go towards anything else.
I'm not, and I'm not disagreeing. What I'm saying is, I, I just don't have a recollection of it, and I'm not trying to be difficult.
Well, that's because it happened in March.
Yeah, exactly. So it, and I, and I agree with you as well. We need to be following up with these. How are we voting? If I voted for it or against it, I don't care. Need to be followed up on. But I'd just like to see, I'd like to see what it is you're asking and talking about, instead of just discussing it. That's possible.
And also, we need the financials from Scott, because I think he's wrote some numbers on how much it would be.
Well, that wouldn't matter. It, it'd be, what we voted on should be in there.
It, it's.
Whatever we voted should be in there.
We voted to change it to unlimited sick time, because Les has been cut off at a certain number for so many years. He's not gaining any more sick time.
All right, so.
He's dead.
Can, um, I guess when you go back to work, I wanna make a motion.
He's not the only one.
I know, there's more. I'm just saying, that's what we use that.
Motion to go back into Robert's rules?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I like to motion that Danielle investigate what was actually stated, and what actually happened, and bring that to the council next meeting.
I'll second that.
Well, how, how, is that for discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
How would we, what would the investigation be? Is it, was it recorded?
Just to see what it was we voted on?
Was it recorded?
It'd have to be if we voted on it.
It'd have to be if we voted on it. Yeah, to see what we.
Can I say something? I wasn't here in the workshop. I do know that it was talked about in the workshop.
But, yeah, but we wouldn't make a vote on a workshop.
Okay, but here's the thing. But she sent out a copy of what you were voting on before you, you had, you had two different readings on.
All I can go by is what was given to me from either.
Was that when?
Like, the actual personnel policy. So it's not gonna tell me what you guys changed and what didn't. Does that make sense?
There's no tracing what you're talking about, basically.
Well, yes, there is, because she sent the policy out to everybody before you voted in that meeting the first time, and also the second time. So it's in, it's in.
But if that change wasn't made accidentally or otherwise, then it would be the same as what we got now, which would just be.
Same policy, we just need to change it back. Did the overtime, I believe the overtime and stuff got changed that we wanted for the police department, they were getting paid.
Mm-hmm.
So their hours got changed. The selling of two weeks' worth of.
I remember that one.
Vacation is in there. Everything we voted on except for that one.
I remember that. I remember those parts. Those are the parts I did remember.
And we, that's the only place that's not been changed, is that one, which, I mean, it could've been oversight, no problem. We can fix it easily if it is. It's no problem.
Well, I do remember one of the things Mr. Grubbs talks about was, if you did a hundred and twenty, in, in order to help people who might be sick longer than that, you can get a long-term disability policy given by the city.
But is that what we voted on?
No.
I think that's the key. It's not if that's a better idea, but it's what we voted on.
And as much as I like to see that, it still has to do with what we voted on.
So we can just look at what Danielle sent us. Yes, yes, sir.
The point of this argument, or discussion, I'll say, is that we need to go back to the minutes and see what we voted on.
Right.
Some of us don't recall. I apologize. I don't recall exactly what we did. It's in, it'll be in the minutes. If it was voted on, it'll be in the minutes, and there's no reason to sit here and argue.
You're gonna have a policy.
She wasn't here.
You're gonna have a policy that you voted on.
So there was no minutes.
But I can't tell you.
For a meeting?
For a workshop.
No, I know, but we would vote in a workshop, wouldn't we?
That's not what I'm saying.
Had to be voted on in a meeting.
Scott, did you have something to add? I'm sorry.
You have to be something formal for me to speak first.
A motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I've been asking this question since I got here, and we finally have gotten the very best we know as to be the personnel policy that was passed. You're gonna spend extra time trying to find something, but this is the best we got, the one you got. So my recommendation is, if you wanna change this one, then you need to go through the process and change it.
You just make an amendment.
Now, to answer the question of what was it prior to the one you have now, uh, it was unlimited sick leave accrual, uh, prior to the one that we're operating under now, okay, in the spring. I have a copy of the twenty sixteen policy here, okay, and it was unlimited all. And the reason that is, is because the unused sick days can be counted towards your years of credible service for TCRS, okay? And that's why you would do that, okay? Um, but then you have some other issues that come up. My recommendation would be, and I, Danielle and I have talked about this. The best you got right now is to start with the policy that we've got signed off now. That's the best we're gonna get. That's it. That's what we got.
Why is this the best? What, if, if we voted for the unlimited?
I say it is the best rendition of what's existing. There's nothing else to be got. If you go back to the minutes, you're not gonna get anything better than what we've got here, because we spent months.
We, we've plowed through this, trying to make sense of what versions have been changed and what haven't, because all I can go by is what was handed to me. I had no part in writing the personnel policy, had no part of the amendments of the personnel policy.
Right, but if, if we said that we wanted it to be unlimited, well, let me, we're not in Robert's rules. If, if we, if we wanted it to be unlimited, then it should be unlimited, whether that's the best version of this or not. I just don't understand how that gets lost if that happens.
I think what he's saying is, we have this, we can amend it. There's nothing that says you can't amend this, it just.
But it should, if, if we did that, it shouldn't need amending. It should've just happened. Am I misunderstanding something?
And I can't, I can't.
I, I feel crazy, but I don't know.
I didn't write it.
I don't understand.
Scott says we got it unlimited, too, right?
The old one.
Prior, old, it was prior to.
But I think there was an amendment to.
But the discussion we had was, they were cut off. They were not gaining any more sick time.
Right.
That's why we went to the unlimited, so it would benefit them in retirement years of service.
But my point is, Mr. Grubbs and Mr. Moore were talking on that, so I have no, all I can go by is what was given to me, so that's.
They don't make the decision.
I agree.
The biggest problem I have is, we're talking about it in August. That's the biggest problem I have. If we'd have talked about it in April, we'd probably all remember what we did, so.
Okay, Steve, um, oh.
The reason, as best I can tell, okay, when I first got here, we began to ask that question. All I want's a signed copy of what's been approved. It was difficulty trying to ascertain with all the parties which one was actually approved. We finally got Mr. Moore, who signed off and said, this is, this is the one.
Yeah.
So he signed off on it, then mayor, to your court, and that's the one that you have.
Was that prior to him resigning, or, or after he resigned?
Uh, it'd been prior.
No, he signed some stuff after he resigned.
So after he resigned, so he probably wasn't really paying attention to what he was saying, just here leaving alone.
But here's the thing, you're not gonna have anything else going back and looking.
I see what you're saying now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just, if you want to amend it, we can certainly amend it. I mean, this is a document you can amend.
I'd like that not to happen again, though, going forward. I mean, it should, it, we, this is the one that we figured was the one that was voted on. It's just crazy.
We are assuming, but, but then again, you don't know, because.
How do we not, how do we not know this is the last one?
Whatever Danielle sent out each time is what was approved each time. Whatever Danielle sent out each time is what was approved each time, and if you didn't read through it, uh, that's.
My, my, my thing is, I couldn't tell you what you voted on to change, does that make sense?
I'd like to just make a quick suggestion, I think, we're all, so, I've acknowledged the frustration you're having with this, it's happened to me many a times, okay, so I'm right there with you. I think the best way moving forward on this is just, we, we, we already got a policy accepted, let's go ahead and just start that process over and get, get the new one going. And I don't think that, I think that'd be the easiest way to get it done, now what we can clearly remember, we gonna make conscious though, because I just don't, I don't remember, and I apologize, I don't remember. But I, but I don't, and I think the best way to just move forward.
I got you.
Or just amend it.
And when the attorney does the legal form on it, again, not me, I think.
I'd like to make a motion to go back into Robert's rules.
Okay. All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend our personnel policy from, for sick leave from a hundred and twenty days to unlimited sick leave accrual. Also, there's a, uh, section there about residency within fifteen miles of the city, I believe that needs to be stricken from the personnel policy because it could bring up some issues with some employees that do not live within fifteen miles.
Well, I think that's the, because.
But that's, that's the.
I'll say again for discussion.
Okay.
I, I just don't feel comfortable voting on this yet, I'd like to look at those things, um, that you're saying, that's cool. Um, so I was wondering, I was gonna ask you, do you mind if we table this till next time so I can make an educated vote on it?
I do mind.
Well, the only thing.
And the reason I mind it, because it's supposed to have been changed six months ago.
But.
We're just talking about that one thing.
But to his point.
Yeah, it's the unlimited, we talk about both parts or just the?
Can we just do the unlimited?
Well, but, but to your point.
I don't know, I don't even know anything about that, that, that fifteen mile radius, like, I'm gonna make an uneducated vote, I don't wanna vote on that.
It's in the policy that she sent you, you know what I'm saying, the reason I'm saying that is because it's hard to find qualified police officers to, that live within fifteen miles of here.
Can we not fix one thing at a time?
But I'd like to suggest something, may I suggest something?
It does impact people already.
That's what I'm saying, we need to fix it.
Excuse me, can I, just, because we did ask specifically, could you kinda let us know what about the policy, so I have to kind of agree. Let's be specific when we put these things on, so everybody can study and be educated about what we're talking about.
I agree, ma'am, but if I don't have a copy of the policy, how should I be specific about the policy?
Because she's.
After I ask where to put on the.
Steve, if you don't have a copy of the policy and I don't have a copy of the policy, how can I vote on a policy, I don't wanna vote on this right now.
It should have been emailed to you.
I believe you're all, we're giving hard copies.
To vote on it.
You were all giving hard copies when we voted on it, Danielle provided it three meetings.
You get what I'm saying, I mean, it, it, I'm not, you might get my vote on it, but I'm saying, we may have given it my own.
But it was the signed copy that was put into effect, is what I'm saying, it didn't have the attorney's signature, your signature, and I believe Danielle's signature.
We just signed off on it in April.
We didn't have those signatures on it when we were giving the copies, is what I'm saying.
I don't have problems with, I wanna read before I vote, I wanna read what we're voting on before I vote.
That's, that's my motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was your motion again, I lost it.
Motion to take out the hundred and twenty day limit on sick days and make it back to the unlimited. And eliminate the, the fifteen mile within the city limits for employees.
I'm not second to that.
Okay. Again, it would help tremendously if people had a chance to really read through this.
I've read through the personnel policy when it was sent to me.
Well, I know specifically what is going to be addressed at the meeting, otherwise.
I read through the whole thing.
Any further discussion on this one? Okay.
I request a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote on those two changes to, it's, remember, this is just, it's an amendment, so it will have to be rewritten and voted on.
Before we do that, can we, can the two things be separated?
Sure.
The unlimited thing first, get that done.
Well, it's not sure, I mean, he would have to.
If we're not sure about the other, because I would like to see it.
Well, that's.
Let's just do one thing, two opposite things.
The personnel policy says you must live within fifteen miles.
So there's already a motion second, we've had discussion, any more discussion?
Well, are you, are you changing your motion now? Okay, so it's to vote on both of them, roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Knappel.
Yes.
Councilman Bev.
Yes.
Councilman Evil.
No.
Councilman Peters.
Yes.
Councilman Petty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reese.
No.
Okay, now, this is the first reading, and it has to, you've got to, we've got to have a specific language that you wanna put in this next time. It has to have specific language, however you want to write that.
I'm looking at it.
I'm just gonna see.
Attorney, I don't, I don't.
That's what I'm saying, I, I agree with her, it's gotta have language.
Well, fine, we're eliminating the one section that says you have to live within fifteen miles of the city, simple, we're taking out one hundred and twenty days and putting in unlimited.
And we already voted on it?
We had.
We voted on it.
But she wanted to make sure the language was correct.
Okay, for the second vote, we need specific language, it has to be voted twice.
So what you're asking me to do is have your proposed amendment for the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the next one is, um, water, oh, okay, the water pipe drainage, Councilman Evil, are you?
Yes, um, uh, can I just talk freely first for one minute?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second, motion to suspend the rules.
You got a second?
Uh.
All in favor?
Uh, uh, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, there's a drain pipe behind Safeway, it's like a grate, Les will tell you a little bit more about it, and I talked to Les about it, he's been, I'll tell you that this, you, they've been great helping Todd with all this stuff, we don't know, first off, who owns the drain pipe, and Todd seems to think the city owns it, and Les isn't sure. I think we need to look in to see who owns this, but basically what's happened is it's collapsed in, in a way on itself. It, and it's, what's happening is it's getting, water's coming in off that hill, and basically, they were about half an inch away from getting completely flooded and shut down over a big rain. So I think that if, if, if we're, we need to find out if we're responsible for it, if we're responsible for it, and that happens, that could probably fall on our insurance, so, um, I would just like to basically, when we come back to Robert's rules, motion that we find out who is responsible for that drain, and then at the next meeting, we can vote to do something about it.
Well.
Can, can I say something too, I went out the next day and took pictures of it.
Uh-huh.
And the way the water was running was toward that one corner there, uh, behind, let's say, uh, uh, Todd's.
Yeah.
Right there's where it's all going in that direction, I've got six, I have pictures on here of it, it seems to be coming from the bluff, right there behind the, and starting there and just going that way, and there's a lower spot, plus, the garage or whatever that mechanic place, it's higher up, and that water is going down there too, and so.
A French drain, maybe, whether it's us or him.
May, may, may Les and I address this, because after you.
I know all about this.
Yeah.
But we found out it does not belong to the city.
No, it doesn't.
Can you all, do you all mind?
Well, let me, let me finish.
Let the mayor explain that to you.
Okay, 'cause, and actually, we talked to Todd this afternoon, I went through the original owners, the people who bought, who actually built it back in the seventies. That whole area of drainage was created, actually Barney Cann told me all about it, he created it, they came in, the engineers built it, he said, no, ma'am, that's, that's, goes with the property. And, uh, we felt those lines has nothing to do with the city, so we went out to talk to Todd today, and he, he understands and is in agreement with that, that this is not, we, once or twice, we have helped because there was flooding out there, but the problem, and Barney has said this is what they did when they were out there, any kind of cardboard or anything that falls down there in the flood will stop that drain, he said, just, we always kept that cardboard out from the front and the back, and that was all the problem. Now, Todd does know if, if he wants to add an extra drain out there, it will be for them, because that is their property, he agrees with that.
Mayor, did, did you find that out from a conversation, or did you, did you find documentation on it, I just wanna make sure our bases are centered.
Okay, we.
How close is it to the building?
It's, it's almost close to, it's closer to the bluff than it is the building, it's pretty, it's pretty far away from the building.
But, but again, again, according to.
A lot of space factors, I mean.
Well, according to both, two different people who built that area, that was an old farmland that they had to fill in and build, and they created their own drainage system out there. It, it does not belong to the city, they were very specific about that, and Todd says, okay, I understand now, so.
Who owns the, uh, the, uh, the muffler place?
He owns that land too.
He owns that too.
Yeah.
He owns all the land up above, well, it goes with the.
All up behind him.
Standing with them.
He bought all that.
Yeah, and he also, yes, sir.
Motion to go back into Robert's rules.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Um, I was just gonna say, I just, might wanna find, I mean, whatever y'all wanna do, I don't care, but we might wanna make sure that's in writing, that that is not the city's.
Well, I think if you talk with Todd tomorrow, he'll, he'll let you know if he.
I'll have this tape, check the, uh, CRS and the tax records, you'll know.
Okay, I'll, I'll call Todd.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanna make sure.
But I appreciate you bringing us, but that's a good question.
And I'll also make one more mention that Les, Todd spoke very highly, Les comes out there, helps out with everything on there as much as he could, and that's very much pretty.
I think that's good.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I needed to know was who owns it.
Yeah.
We can do nothing, we forgot who owns it.
And just, and we did bring this, and we gave it to Todd too, there's actually a state, there's a law that we can't use public funding for any kind of private property, and he said, I understand that, so, but it's good to check it out, right, so we have to check that out. Uh, okay, the next one is traffic light changes?
Yes, okay, um, I, I can, I'll just put this in a motion and then we can discuss it, um, I'd like to motion that we change that traffic light to, um, go to blinking at Third and Main at seven P.M.
Instead of eight?
Instead of ten.
Second for discussion.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, motion second, discussion?
Instead of eight, yeah, instead of ten o'clock, it's been ten o'clock ever since I was there, and it's like there's no traffic, and people just sit there and forever, and it just kinda clogs things up, and so, yeah, just, you know, and I wouldn't mind six, but I don't think I'd get a vote for six.
I think all of Main Street used to be eight o'clock, I remember when it used to.
Shut it all down and all blinking all the way through.
All the way.
Yeah.
And it was great. I'd love to go back to that.
Will that make a difference?
Even the bridge was blinking.
Yeah, I'd rather go to all of Main Street again.
Well, I, I'm happy to do that.
A lot of people like that.
If you all are, um, can I, can I, can I add that to new business?
Hold on, second.
Go ahead.
Can you set the timer on those lights, or does it have to be a company that does that?
I think we can do it.
You can do it, okay.
It's costing.
Seven or eight. All the way. I'd like to see all the way, I don't know about seven, seven or eight, eight was nice.
So you don't have to redo it every day?
Yeah.
How much would it cost for us to do that approximately?
I don't know, probably several hundred dollars at least, probably maybe.
I'm a.
Minimal.
Yeah.
Stan Sol Electric is the one who comes up and does it.
We can find out how much it was.
Come on, come on, come on.
I'm gonna re, I'm gonna resend my motion, okay, now I'm gonna motion that, um, we change the light to go to blinking at seven o'clock at the following locations, I'm just saying this low for you.
Bridge.
Tell me when we're ready. Let's start here, Bill.
Go ahead.
Bridge and Main Street. Third and Main Street. Where's that map at?
Right.
Forgot what it was, did you figure where the lights were?
Is it Fight?
Fight, oh, yes, it's Fight.
Got it, all right, Fight and Main Street. I think that's it, I don't, I don't see us needing to do that near McDonald's.
No, please don't do that.
Those are my three locations.
Okay, yes, sir, second?
I'll just go second for discussion, would you consider eight o'clock instead of seven? Eight, eight was nice, seven may be a little early.
I'll, I'll defer to y'all, I mean, would y'all rather do eight or seven, I don't, I mean.
I think A B.
Just the only safe side, Chief, do you have something to say?
Just real quick, if y'all.
Motion to, well, we're just gonna let you, go ahead, talk.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
So I would say that's probably not a problem, the only intersection that may be an issue is Third and Main, hold on, don't, don't jump me yet. The reason being is, is 'cause there's a lot of cars parked on Main Street right there, right there on, uh, and then if you pull up right there, sometimes it's hard to see if any traffic's coming. So I think maybe before that was the reason why I was pushed back a little bit later, was because it was less traffic on the roadway and.
What about eight o'clock?
It's probably better than seven, in my opinion, really, I think that would be the only concern, just that traffic, it's hard to see traffic on that Main Street with the cars parked, so.
All right, so I'll, um.
And if there's any issue.
Are we in discussion, I can't keep up.
Yes.
Do we need to go back into Robert's rules?
No.
Just one quick thing, I, I feel strongly that we need to not change the one at the end, where the old bridge comes in, from the Walmart intersection, because there's, that still gets a lot of, of attention and a lot of traffic, fairly late, you know, up till nine, three, or ten o'clock.
The bridge?
Yeah.
You don't wanna change that one?
I think that'll be.
He's talking about the one down on New Bridge.
You're talking about the Walmart?
No, well, definitely, but I'm talking about the old bridge and up Fair Road, good.
I like that one being eight.
Uh, I mean. That's just my opinion.
Yeah.
If y'all know about this and y'all decide to change, do you want me to report back if we see any more influx of accidents or.
Sure.
I'm good.
How about that, does that sound?